All right.
Host, motion carries. Offer motion to enter into open session?
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, motion carries. We stand for the pledge of the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. We'll start with our stained glass mural project presentation.
It's all yours. They'll get it up for you here in one minute. Let me just double check that the microphone's on there.
Nope. Why would that?
Well, can everybody hear me? Okay, so good evening. I'm Tracy Bloom and here with us to share this project, our student Amaya Henderson, a senior, and Nico Lefter, who is a junior, and the fabulous Jamie Gilbert, who is my partner in collaboration. So we're going to share with you this project that we've been working on. This is year three, and we plan to have it completed this year and permanently installed in the front glass hallway. I'm not sure how often you guys get to come in through those doors, you know, with your meetings on this end, but it is pretty spectacular, so I hope you'll get to see it at home. If I don't do it again, Ryan, which?
The right or left hand side. You push on the circle. There you go.
Okay. All right. So Jamie, you want to help me tell this first part of how we got together?
Go ahead and start.
Okay. So actually, that summer, I knew there was a lot of material in the storeroom, stained glass and all the supplies you need for stained glass windows. I had used that as supplies back when I taught, believe it or not, production systems one year. I helped out and taught technology as one of my teaching periods. And so we made it like a business and we actually had clients who would pay us money for the windows. And then I just took the money and bought more supplies. So we had supplies. And then fast forward, right before the pandemic hit and school closed, I was working with the Career Path Academy kids. So I'd asked if I could get some things like flux. I wasn't sure if it would still be usable. So I got some more supplies and then split those. So I didn't get to use it with them and I didn't want it to go to waste and nobody else had touched it because I wasn't, you know, it's kind of a skill dependent material. So anyway, I went and shared with Jamie and we realized it would be great for us to get our kids together to do something for the school community and instill that sense of belonging, you know, like this is my community and I belong here. And so we came up with the idea for for this stained glass project. Originally, we were gonna do it in a different window, but we are very adaptable people and so we've been able to adapt to the changes. And, you know, together Jamie and I that summer figured out how we could get our kids to be able to work on it together, how that everybody would have access. And so it began. So we did in-school field trips and we found an incredible artist from our community. Have any of you ever met Erwin Printup Junior? Some of you have. Have any of you been to the Tuscarora School? You've seen the big, beautiful, incredible mural in the cafeteria and then much of the framed artwork. That was all painted by Erwin Printup Junior. He has a piece in the Castellani Museum. He is a very celebrated artist and he's in our community and he's been coming in and helping with our Niagara Field kids for 20 years. So he's also Jamie's cousin.
At least for this, the purpose of this presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, we were able to get him to come in and that's been really exciting too. He comes in each year and works with the kids and such. So this, we came up with the idea of interdependence. You know, during the pandemic, there was a lot of that. I remember Oxford Pennant did a thing that said something like, you know, we can get through this together, kind of thing. It was that sort of positive mentality and we both loved that and wanted to do something with that idea. So we came up with the theme interdependence. And we met with the kids and they designed this image because it's, you know, it describes a very famous local, you know, the Niagara Falls, but it also compares that idea of interdependence to where we see it in nature. How the water cycle, sunlight, plants, pollinators all work together and rely on one another to make the earth rich with natural resources and allowing it to sustain life. That all came from the kids. We had to meet several times. It took months, just so you know, to agree on a design and figure it all out. Here you can see, you know, they were challenged with how do we communicate our theme? How do we apply design elements and principles to our composition? How do we design pieces that not as glass cutters can manage because that also matters? You can see the kids here working on the final designs and making sure all three panels match up. So we had an in-school field trip. And so that allowed us to get all the kids together for a half day and we could teach them how to cut glass. And so we felt it was important for them to learn that first. So they all covered, soldered, they did the whole thing that day. That way they could kind of imagine some of the challenges when they were designing. So that way they did, they did not design something that would be impossible to make. It would be too complicated. So we gave them that chance to understand their medium a little bit, you know, being introduced to it. So that whole day it sounded like Stanis workshop, fluff, 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 like all these bang, 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 bang noises while we did it. It was really exciting. So then we also had an in-school field trip where we did just design. So we brainstormed concepts, different sketches you can see here as it was evolving. Erwin Printup Junior, he helped us a ton with this part. He even brought in one of his paintings, talked to the kids about his process, how he designs, how he solves composition issues, how he communicates concept. It was like, like bonkers amazing because he is like a gift. So anyway, this was the design that everybody agreed to and so we divided into three segments and came up with our, we were gonna do the bottom panel first because we know it's gonna be the hardest. The bottom is not at a right angle because it was designed to accommodate a ramp floor of that front glass hallway. And we cut and we cut a lot of glass this year. Now, I feel like Amaya and Nico, you guys saw us when we were working on it because you weren't involved yet. Okay? So we have the advanced kids work on this. So their first introduction to it, they just saw these kids working on it and they got to see it kind of come together. The pieces had to fit. So this is a time where, you know, good enough doesn't cut it. Like, like it has to fit. You can't say it's just good enough. You have to make sure everything fits. They had to measure everything multiple times, pop the glass, then measure it again, sometimes tweaking and fixing. It is a lot, but that's why the level of quality is so incredible. We took Regent's exam day that June because my seniors did not, I have to take the test and my juniors came in after they were done with the test and we just soldered our faces off that whole day. It was very hot, I remember. And we've got the, we were, because when you're creating a stained glass window, if you don't know, you have to solder every joint. So if you see all those lines in between all those pieces, all that had to be soldered. Then we had to flip it over. Then we had to solder again the other side. You have to do both sides. And we, and we did it. So this is what it looked like. We had it on two easels for our senior portfolio art show in June. We were super proud. Year two, we learned a bunch from the first year and this is when Nico and Amaya joined our group and we worked on the middle panel. Do you, do you guys want to take over and say anything? Okay. Anytime you want to interject, please do so because you guys know all of this. So one of the big things about the middle panel was consistency. We had to make sure it lined up glass-wise with the panel we had done before. And, you know, plus we had some more complex pieces we had to cut. And we had to teach a new group of kids how to cut glass, which we did. And.
So did you two both do it as well?
Yeah.
You were, you were cutting and soldering?
Yep.
What's the harder part? The cutting or the soldering?
The cutting.
The cutting or the soldering?
She said if it's not right, you gotta do the whole thing.
Sandy, are you ready, John?
It's easy, it's easy to shatter it, the whole thing, right?
You might think it's, you're just about there, just about there, and then that last thing you do and it creates this big. Yeah, and I, yeah, lots of, I buy big, big cases of Band-Aids, lots of Band-Aids, those little, those little, it's like getting people caught in their fingertips. But we do it. After our in-school field trip for year two, I had kids coming in during study hall, during lunch, after school, during our class. I had kids every week coming in, which was great because we didn't start last year till February and that's how we were able to get done. These kids were incredibly dedicated. And also I put that little note in so I don't forget to acknowledge, we realized we were running out of the glass we were using for the water and it had to line up, you know, it had to look like it matched the previous panel, otherwise it wouldn't have read as water. And so I, I came with, you know, my hat, my hand to the business office and thank you again for helping us out. So I was able to buy enough glass to finish that part. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support. It was really beautiful. So here they are soldering last year. We were better at it. Just every, everything I felt went smoother last year, don't you think? We were so much better at everything because we had learned so much that first year. And there was the two panels hanging up. They were hanging up for the show and you can see the paper in the top panel. That's our pattern for one of the windows for this year. So people can kind of see what was coming. Yeah, and Mark Plasek was, he's been our consultant on, you know, once we build it, how do we, what do we have to attach to it so it can actually be installed to a window and still removed? So our building to the grounds folks, our custodial folks can still clean the glass. So it took a lot of thinking and planning to do that and I couldn't have done that without Mark Plasek. So he installed both those panels for us, which is super exciting. Now year three, here we are, top panel. And also we had to add an additional bottom panel because we are now in front of a different window than originally planned. But like I said, we're adaptable and that's okay. And so everybody rose to the occasion. So tying in with the theme, so Lexi Bissell graduated last year, but I have to give her a mention. She was the brains behind our original concept and she was the one who came up with, well, let's do decomposers on the ba, bottom of the panel because they enrich the soil and that is part of this interdependence. And it's like, yeah, and it's literally below everything else. So thank goodness for Lexi Bissell because she really helped us with that. So this year we actually designed it. You can see we're starting to build this one. Having an in-school field trip, had to teach new kids how to cut glass. I got a picture of Amaya, but she was one of our veterans. So the kids find out who the veterans are and who they can go to, you know, if they need help with stuff. So both Nico, Nico and Amaya were veterans for us and and it was just a really exciting day. I couldn't believe how much we got done that first day. This was after, so we started October 1st. There were a lot of rounded pieces that had to be cut this time, but we had several kids who were, who came back from the year before. So their skill level was just higher than, you know, what we normally start out with and we were just able to like see these pieces happen. And the top panel is cut, it's self-cut. You can't see it here. I do have a slide later. We started cutting the glass in October 1st. We finished cutting it on October 24th. I'm frustrated. I thought I put in the picture of it all done, but you will get to see it. We still need to proper some of the pieces and we'll have to solder it, but we've started working on this panel now. And there's a lot of pieces to this, so this one will take us probably a little bit longer than the top panel, but we're really excited. I'm probably most excited about this one.
You know, it looks like there's a lot of tiny pieces.
Lots of tiny pieces. Yeah, because we're trying to show bacteria and worms and things like that, that, that are decomposers. So the kids are really excited about the skull parts and bone bits. Like that's, that's getting a lot of excitement when those pieces.
Tracy, can you maybe come by and break a few little pieces off while I'm doing it? You can probably use them for the little pieces.
Exactly, yeah. So if anybody were to ask you, and I thought it'd be great if you guys got to hear this from us, if anybody asks you, what, what is that? What does it mean? So we created this stained glass mural to celebrate our Niagara Field community. We hope it serves as a reminder that when we show up for one another, when we can truly rely on one another during even the tough times, we can get through anything together. And that is just what we want to leave. And, and for our concept, like I said before, the kids came up with this beautiful idea to compare that notion as to how we can serve it in nature. We can learn so much from nature.
Right. And even from an indigenous perspective, we've always relied on nature, heavily on nature for survival and our way of life. And so like when we consider the role of bees in agriculture and even the water cycle, evaporation and condensing in the clouds and then dropping the rain, you can, you can see everything working together. And you sense a lot of, well, say, like cooperation in, in nature. And I think that's what our mural is also speaking to a lot of us. And then culturally, inter, inter, interdependence between humans and nature has always been based on respect and responsibility, right, to, to, to our nature, to, to, to earth, you know? And I think even when we pass over into our school culture with respect and responsibility to each other, that also, you know, sends a strong message to our school community. And that's, I think, our hope for our stained glass mural, all of us working together. And I mean, it didn't even hit me until just now when I was watching the kids and the pictures in their work and I'm like, the way they helped each other, the way they made the students. Tracy and I walked around, you know?
I was answering, can we use this color for this one? Can we use this? So we didn't even cut that much that day. It was, the kids were really amazing.
Hands on.
Yeah.
I love the way they helped each other and that's what, you know, this is all about.
Yeah.
Helping each other.
Yeah.
Being there.
And the location's important too with where it is, the home right now too, right?
Right.
Because.
I love the new place where it is. I think it will even get seen more where it is now than where originally we were gonna put it.
It's when you first walk in, but also right next to the display that's there to honor the Tuscarora culture. Right, right next to it. So, so if you go back on one of the slides, I think where they showed that showcase, you can probably see it.
It was.
Yep, took it right there. So it's, it's gonna be right next to the.
So you can see it facing that great grassy courtyard that the cafeteria like and when the sun strike shines through, it is, there are beveled, pieces of beveled glass that we've put in all the panels intentionally. When the sun comes through, it refracts into these like gorgeous, just gorgeous lights in the floor. It's so pretty. It's really so pretty. Okay, so the last slide is just the, this is everybody who has touched and worked on our stained glass mural. And it's really impressive to see over three years, the number of students. So the names in rows, those are all students. And then of course our visiting artists from Printup, Mark Plasek and Greg Phillips, they've both been incredibly helpful and supportive. We couldn't have done the project without them. So we just wanted to share it. Does anybody have any questions about what it is or what we've done?
Beautiful work.
Beautiful work.
That's awesome.
Beautiful. Nice presentation.
Yeah, very nice.
We thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for coming and being a part of that. Yeah, beautiful project, beautiful art, beautiful symbolism and everything behind it. Just awesome thing for our school community. So I appreciate it, guys.
So Nico and Amaya, are you gonna build one of these on your own and then kind of square off against each other in a competition?
And after this is done.
All right. I like that.
I did want to end with, you know, on June 4th, that's when the full piece will be up and unveiled. That's also the day of our art show. These incredible artists will have, they will be displaying because they're both in our AP Art Program this year, which is really awesome that they're taking on that extra rigor. So hope to see you.
Did the former students get notified to come back?
I'm not sure. Like, I don't know, you know, once they're not on my roster, I don't have their address.
Just touch base with us. We'll, we'll. There are all the dresses. We can help with the addresses. You can get, you put over what you want in the letter and we'll get them out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great idea.
That is a great idea. Thank you so much. Thank you for letting us.
Moving on to residents comments. Anyone have we signed up? I don't believe. To consensus item agenda. We're gonna separate number five, which is the authorized project submission and funding request for the Niagara Field Outdoor Instruction Project. So I'll call for a motion to accept consensus. Item agendas one, two, three, four, and six. Motion, second in, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sting, motion carries. Number five.
Great, thank you. I know I've spoken many, many times here about our Eco Campus project and have talked about the something we're really excited about, which is the Eco Campus boardwalk and outdoor classroom node, the step downs near the creek. We've partnered with Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper and they put a proposal in with us to the Greenway Ecological Standing Committee. They were able to secure some funds to start design. They secured funds in the amount of over $200,000. That's just the initial funds that they secured. They'll go back for another ask for funding a little bit down the line. From our own host community monies, because if you remember me talking about this before, the Greenway Ecological Standing Committee will not put funds into actual construction of like a bridge or an outside classroom. That has to come from us. We have our host community funds that we can utilize for that portion of the project. And what, and I say we, Allison has really done all the work. I'm just gonna say we put together a proposal that has to go to the host communities, has to be approved here first. The proposal is to secure funds for funding for most communities, for playgrounds at each of our elementary schools, minus Tuscarora because Tuscarora Nation School will be getting a playground through the funding that's already been secured through the state because the state funds that school separately. Okay? So that there is a playground way in there hopefully this summer over at Tuscarora School. But the other three elementary schools will all get into playgrounds. They're all at their end of life. I think Eric and those school pieces of our school community would, would say so. So we are, we will be replacing those. We actually had to replace last year some swings. It was, it was last spring, right? Some swings that Eric wrote because they were just in such bad shape that they were no longer safe. And it had actually rotted out while the poles down the ground. So the three playgrounds as well as the boardwalk and all of that work is a total of about 2.0 do I have this right? 2.6 million. We're getting 204,000 from the Ecological Standing Committee to start. We had about $500 from the New York Seaground. It's small, but it's something. So this is the work that we're proposing. We're, we've already, I know in other meetings in the past, showed the design work of what, what that whole thing will look like over there. The bridge will actually go over to the property that is owned by the NWA. The NWA is a Niagara Field Athletic Association. They own property over there where they're putting fields in. They plan to put a field house in. Students who would be going over there could walk across this bridge as opposed to walking out on 31 to get over there to any after-school events that they may have that would take place on that property. I would imagine some interdependence. With fields, right? Because they, NWA currently uses our fields for many things here on campus. I would imagine when they put their, their facilities in, our students will also have an ability to use, you know, their, their fields as well. So I think there's gonna be some good interdependence. What are the results?
Nothing other than these totals, that 2.6 million is an estimate as of right now. So, which is why the resolution is up to not, up to not to exceed 2.5 million. So I have to have the resolution in place to submit the grant. And I don't know that I'll have the other, I wouldn't have the other dollars for tonight's meetings.
And those who are on the capital project committee a little bit, I think we've talked a little bit about maybe the playground over at Tus, Tuscarora Nation School at one point. It's really just unbelievable how much playgrounds are these days, especially when you have to, rightfully so, have to be compliant in so many different ways at a school. Where the, without the the, the cost for the architects and that sort of thing, we're looking at just the the playground stuff itself and the labor to put it in, about $400,000 per playground. For the three.
So I'll call for a motion to approve the resolution to authorize project submission and funding requests for the Niagara Field Outdoor Instruction Project. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second in, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Thank you. Bringing up to personnel items, offer a motion to personnel items, one through 21, as presented.
I'll move.
Motion seconded, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Onto our standing committees. I mean, you report from the capital projects committee.
We really don't have anything new to update on that. Things are going well, but there's nothing. You do talk, you talk about tennis courts all the time.
Yeah, we do. We do talk about tennis courts. I just, I just remembered one thing. So we're, we're working with our construction managers right now on timeline for the auditorium. There's some concern that with some of the steel, that the project's been moved back, it's gonna be moved back a little bit. We don't think that's okay and acceptable, right? So there, you know, the date right now is January. They're talking maybe March. So we're, we're working through that. Just to let everybody know, if you hear anything, you know, they talk about it here, from here first, but we'll work through, through that to see what it's gonna take to keep us back on track. Here's the concern that year, right? And they all know this, meaning the Jayven, who is the prime contractor and our construction manager, that that year our plan is to have all of our spring musicals here, okay? Not have to go over to SUNY Niagara, right? But our goal is to be here in 26 for those musicals, so.
Talk about the rooms soon.
Oh, thank you.
No, go ahead.
Okay. The tech rooms are complete, all right? We have the any TMS, so we, we can set up a time maybe before the next meeting, either this next meeting or the December meeting. We can go over and take a quick look if you want to see, see the work that's been done there. See if it really came out nice and we're really happy that those are up and running.
For the policy committee, we have the first reading, another number of policies here. We have office policy 5840, artificial intelligence, 5603, emergency drones, 6550, leaves of absence, 7220, graduation requirements, 7224, virtual instruction, 7470, student government, 7554, equal educational opportunities, 7555, educational services for married and pregnant students, Educational services for married pregnant students. Uh seventy two twenty five advanced coursework, fifty six eighty one, school safety plans. Fifty, what's that, fifty six eighty one, school safety plans, fifty six sixty one. Wellness policy and thirty four twenty one, a title nine and sex discrimination policy. And then those are there for first reading, do we approve that, or is that just racial? Uh so those are there for for the board to review. And also from the policy committee, we have, I keep showing up, uh a deletion of policy fifty two forty. Uh which is a school tax assessment, prop tax exempt policy.
So just really quick, um the policy, they would have had to make significant changes to the policy, meaning, and whenever I say they, we worked, for those that don't know, with. Yuri Mabosi's, the attorney who worked on helping prep these policies for us. The number of changes, they felt like just, as opposed to doing that, they're just saying, get rid of the policy and here's why. For school districts to enact any kind of tax exemption, they actually have to vote on it, it has to go, it has to actually be a. A voted on item in public session, there's already regulations set up. So as opposed to making any adjustments to a policy that's already in regulation, they're suggesting just follow the regulation. Give you some examples, you know, we've, the board here has acted on um a. A firefighter's exemption in the past, uh a veteran's exemption in the past, you know, be a couple of examples, so if there were other exemptions like that. The board would actually have to take action for those things to go under place, and that's all again set up by state regulation.
Hey, thank you, that um for motion to uh delete policy fifty two forty.
I'll second.
Move consecutive, uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, she carries. Uh ex officio student reports.
So as many of you know, the fall sports have officially ended, and I just wanna take a quick moment to say all the athletes and teams have great. Great seasons for all of our sports today. And then the senior SUNY free week, the SUNY application free week, I believe is over by now. Um and I wanna thank the teachers and counselors for working overtime, um you know, weekend emails. Lots of meetings and just a big stress lifted off our shoulders out, it's over. I also wanna thank the student council committee and the pep clubs. Um for the Holland Spirit Week and the events after school that turned out amazing. Um there's a lot of sense in the students, they're just great overall. And then one more thing, the, there was a fire alarm. I I I don't remember if it was faulty or not today, there were rumors that it was faulty, or if it was just a drill, I'm not sure, but just wanted to call that for attention. Um so that you guys know.
We are very aware, we can't get away from it, Jonah, these days, because because we have this wonderful thing on our phone called Raptor. And and whether or not it's real or fake or, you know, an accident, in this case, it was a smokehead, they don't know if it was a faulty smokehead. Or if it was set off by um by vaping or something like cigarettes, something like that, they didn't smell a lot of cigarette, they didn't smell cigarette smoke. And didn't see a lot of, you know, vape um cloud, so it's possible that it's a faulty.
Yeah.
Um but we will always know, because our phone makes this noise that's very, very loud. And we all gather and say, what's going on, and we're very quickly in touch with uh your principal, Mrs. Boich, and we. Knew right away where it was and um Greg, Greg Phillips, whose name was already mentioned tonight, was over to quickly take care of that. I I will tell this, I've said this for the board, if it's okay if I elaborate since you brought it up. One of the things that we are, that then we do is change out some of those, because you can actually change them into um. Uh heat sensors uh versus smoking, so we're, we've been doing some of that, there's some better technology out there, we've been changing some of those out. We don't, I we don't, we didn't know at the time if that was one that's ever been changed out or not, so. And and I was happy that it wasn't raining anymore, when you guys were outside, I think everybody probably was.
Is that it, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh for president's report, uh we had our NISMO convention, uh Bob and Julie, as well as myself, attended. And uh one of the hot topics is AI, which is interesting, which is on the heart of it. Interesting thing that the schools are gonna have to navigate, but it's a good time, uh able to meet and talk with other. School board members from across the state, some ideas on best practices, things other districts are doing. You know, if anyone else has any comment on that.
As far as the AI, it was actually tough to get into some of those classes.
Yeah.
And they filled up so fast, if you weren't there fast enough, you weren't getting in, and so it's um, everybody's really tuned in to what's going on with this AI. And I can see a lot of things happening with it, for the district itself, so.
In 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 including, including the policy that was the first read, first AI, AI policy.
Exactly.
Sure that'll change.
Um I attended a lot more, like my sessions, I am leaning more towards, we're like mental health. Um so, learned a lot about that, there's a big um push to. Start services that things younger, which is great, catch things at a younger age, which is very necessary. That's kind of my focus was more uh on the mental health side.
I hope to have been able to have the opportunity to go to that. So I have some super nudes reporting.
I'm just a quick staffing update, if you could.
Sure, uh thank you, uh this past week alone, uh some positive news to report, we've taken in five bus driver applicants. Uh just in the last five business days, I really don't think in the five years I've been here I've seen. So I I am very grateful and cautiously optimistic, right, and um. You know, we're we're seeing a little bit of that, you know, I I've said it before, but I do mean it every time I say it, I I really feel we're lucky to be here at Niagara Field. We still attract candidates for so many positions, certainly drivers are one of those that, you know, we're always looking to fill a little bit more, but. You know, some of our neighbors just aren't as lucky, you know, and um grateful for that. Um also, just a compliment, you know, and and a thank you for support uh to our food service department, thank you for the board for supporting. Little bit of a newer initiative, uh being able to serve upwards at times of a hundred and thirty meals after school, you know, our students, namely student athletes. Uh we brought on additional personnel to make that obviously come to fruition, and it worked out well for this past fall. And uh Joe and I see you affirming that, so you know that some students were certainly, they can uh taking advantage of that nourishment and uh. Think it was a great help for our student body. Also, uh you can see from some of the things that we're recruiting, the personnel report uh tonight, we're also taking in um. More and more substitute teachers, both certified and non, which is a good sign that that market is improving for us, that's been an area of struggle the last few years. So perhaps we're rebounding a little bit there, so some positive news on the personnel side.
Thank you. Uh November second, we held our Hall and Wall of Fame induction ceremony. Um Ryan, could you go to the website really quick? For those that don't know, I just wanted to bring bring this up really quick, if you go under Community Resources, then Hall and Wall. I'm glad he's doing it, cause he's way faster than I were then, so right here is a picture of this year's inductees and both the board. Both into the Hall and Wall of Fame, just really quick, for those that don't know, the difference between the two. The, it's the Athletic Hall of Fame, which is individuals who either were student athletes or uh coaches. Uh connected to our athletic program, okay? Then we have the um Wall of Fame, the Wall of Fame is for people who have contributed to our school community in other ways. Um and you know, it could be through education, it could be, you know, teachers, ministers, could be people who did incredible things as students and then. Went on to do incredible things in their professional lives, but were in our, you know, our alumni, okay? Right there, if you stop on that one, no, just block out the one part, okay? But if you look at the person in the center there. For those that don't know, Rob Hoover, Rob Hoover is um the chief for the Sanborn Fire Department. Our district is so blessed to have him. Every single time something happens here in our school, he jumps off of his tractor if he's out in the fields. He runs out of his restaurant, if he's in his restaurant, um he stops wherever he is. He takes his Sanborn fire truck into the field, so that if he gets called, he can leave and come right to the school. He is almost always the first person here, every single time, I'm gonna guess today, when we had the false alarm, he's first one, so. He's jumping off, or he's doing all that to get here, to clear the building, to get everybody back in when there is a false alarm. He he's a really special person in our community, all these people appear very special, he happens to be somebody who we get to work with all the time. Because of the really cool stuff that he does for us, how he does it for us and. You know, never would, never, never wants to thank you, um you know, it's just what he does, so um thanks, Rob, thank you, Rob. If you go back to the um original uh picture, but the, yeah, if you go to the home screen. And if you just scroll down a little bit, so so everybody knows, there's both the the wall and Hall of Fame inductees for twenty four here. So you can see them, there were four members of the Hall of Fame, and then if you scroll down just a little bit further, you can see we had this year eight members into the. Uh Wall of Fame, if you go back up to the top, for anybody who's ever interested in nominating somebody for either the Hall or Wall. You can see that you can click on the, um there's some information about each one, and then there's an application. Okay, nomination form, I should say, okay? Thank you. And we are taking nominations already for next year. War recognition dinner will be December, let me think if that works for everybody, I'm sorry, I had to move it forward today. Does that work? December eleventh?
We have a policy, there's supposed to be a policy.
That's o- that's okay, and so we'll we'll start early, I don't even know if we have a policy this coming. And then our next meeting in November, we will be honoring a couple of our uh January graduates, which is really exciting. I will have a couple, a couple of January grads, um yeah. Actually, no, they were summer grads, they were August grads, they were August grads, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, so uh uh the honors of August grads along with our Falcons of the Month, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh some other reports the board submitted, I mean, items for board discussion. Old business? New business? Couple comments? The board member comments? Uh just once again, congratulations to our Hall and Wall of Fame inductees and thanks again for the uh. Stained glass project, for coming out tonight.
Oh, oh, sorry, 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 before you end, can I, can I jump in, I'm sorry. Just a few quick thank yous for the Hall and Wall, Al Pogel, he's organizes it, it's incredible, those have been our graduations. If you've never been to the Hall and Wall, you know what the graduation ceremony is like, and the time that he puts in to really coordinate, he's the chair of the, of our uh. Falcon Wall of Fame, does an outstanding job, but he would be mad if I didn't say thank you to our facilities. What they did to turn our cafeteria into what looked like a, you know, five star restaurant. Um it looked incredible in there, our tech department, who um set up the technology to make it so that we could stream it. Um and and video record it, and um we also had displays of of all of the inductees playing on some of the screens that were. That were in there, they they did a great job making sure all that was set up, and then food service, the the food was outstanding, I don't know, it's. Handled here by our kitchen, so you know, uh that that whole staff uh did an incredible job, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Dan. Okay, uh with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.